I would like to welcome you to tonight's Board of Directors' regular meeting. And if you will join the inflective leaders, that would be great.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America, and it is the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And you're safe, and enjoy every minute of it. We're going to go to Celebrating Success. Do it, please.
Can I have Rick Echols and Dave Murphy, please?
Good evening, everyone. As you all probably know, we have a Celebrating Success program. It was originally designed for employees. And, uh, is it on? Good evening, everyone. As many of you know, we have a Celebrating Success program. It was originally designed for our employees. But tonight, we felt like it was time to expand it a little bit to include some of our very important volunteers. And kicking it off tonight is Dave Murphy, who's been a member of the Tanyard Creek Volunteers for just a short period of time. Dave is a non-paid member of the Tanyard Creek Volunteers. He routinely goes the extra mile in support of the trail system. On the morning of 6/9 of this year, Dave noticed graffiti painted on the storeroom door between the two bathrooms. He sent pictures to the group leader, Randy Hamm, who's also here tonight. And before Randy could respond, Dave sent another picture showing the freshly painted doors. The job was complete. This is a very busy location, and his quick thinking minimized the number of people that saw this. And it was his quick thinking that we won our reward. And tonight, we give him a Celebrating Success.
Doug, can I have Jessica Hansen and Madison Sutter?
Did you get all that suntan lotion wiped off?
I pushed that off the stain.
Jessica was hard at work today on the scene. This is a cool story, because, um, a touching story. A grandmother was walking her two-year-old granddaughter next to the main pool area when she stopped to talk with someone. It appears she leant over the child's hand and went directly into the pool and under the water without the grandmother noticing. She probably was not underwater for more than a couple of seconds before her grandmother pulled her out. She took the child to the concession area where Jessica and Madison were on duty. The grandmother asked if the child seemed okay. Jessica said the child had a bluish color around the mouth and was lethargic but conscious. Jessica took the child and administered some blows to her back while Madison contacted EMS to respond. The child became more responsive, and when EMS arrived within about eight minutes, she was transported to ER to make sure there was no water in her lungs. A big thank you to Jessica and Madison for your quick thinking and immediate response in a situation that could have easily turned into a tragedy. We need to recognize these. Good job, Madison and Jessica.
Is Tommy here? Tommy Lee?
I don't think so.
He's chicken down the road.
Scott Garrison and Mike Johnson, are they here?
We are.
All right, please come on up, guys. These two were nominated by Tommy. He's probably down at the restaurant attending to other business, but we wanted to recognize Scott and Mike. On June 5th, there was a large outdoor event at the Lake Point Complex where live entertainment was scheduled to play on the pergola on the back lawn. Fortunately, Mike was there doing another job, and it was discovered that there was no power at the pergola. Mike immediately began troubleshooting the issue and enlisted the help of Scott, who came over to help. They eventually discovered it was a dead outlet and then took the time to switch it out with one from the building. This was all done after the end of their day, and they performed without any complaint and were even very accommodating to people around them that thought they were, quote unquote, helping. This is not the first time that these two gentlemen have gone above and beyond and worked beyond the time clock to set something right, but it is just the most recent. And I've had experience of myself with both these gentlemen always going above and beyond, so it's time that they do recognize as well. Thank you, Scott. There's one more, Jonah. You may know Jonah from the restaurant. He's awesome as well, and sad that he couldn't be here tonight, but he's going to be recognized in front of his team. But Jonah Butler is his name. Jonah exhibited excellent customer service. This is from a member nominated by Jim McGriff, looks like. She says, "I came in for lunch the other day. Right away, Jonah greeted me with a smile. When he saw us, he asked on a preference on the table." That really wowed me, because what really wowed me is he recognized how busy the server was, so he took the initiative and explained to the server it would be over soon, that he would get us started with drinks. He was sweet and made sure we were taken care of. We've had other examples from Jonah as well, going above and beyond, so he'll recognize it for that, as he did.
This just shows us an example of the great employees we have, and they do go above and beyond, so it's kind of nice to recognize them, as they do it. At this time, are there any additions to the agenda?
Yeah, we have two additions to the agenda. The first one, we're going to have it go in just before item number four. We have Keith Neams here from our golf course maintenance crew, and he's going to talk about the bridge at Burksdale. And then, just before item 15, we're going to have Doug talk about, and Doug has prepared a memo regarding some lawsuits, and so he'll cover that at that time. So two additions.
Any others? If not, let's move into the minutes. Approval of the minutes, May 23rd, the Workday Board Meeting. I'd like to ask for a move for second discussion. If not, a call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay, June 20th, the work session meeting. I'd like to have a second, Jerry. Discussion on that one? If not, all those in favor of the minutes? Got those, Doug? Okay, thank you. Burksdale Bridge and Keith Neams.
Zessad, yes? Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to come up for you today to tell you about a little issue we discovered on the bridge, which was the old number 18 at Burksdale Country Club. We had rains on Sunday, as everyone knows. We had a little bit of flooding. It didn't really get totally out of the river, but it was moving pretty good, lot of debris. You can see, this is a picture of that bridge. After the water had been seeped, you can see the debris here. When I came to work Monday morning, the water was still up to about here. You couldn't see anything under there. It was all debris. So we didn't get in there to start cleaning this up till Wednesday. And all the debris was packed in there. You still couldn't see anything under there. So I had an operator take a backhoe out here in the middle, like we always do, start pulling this stuff out. He pulled probably a 36, 40-inch log away, which allowed the water to go through and flush a bunch of this small debris out. And when we did that, we saw this, which is the pier that's supposed to be over here supporting the bridge. He called me and said we might have a problem. And I asked him where he was. He said he was off the bridge. So we went over and looked at it. I got with Tom. This was about 10 o'clock, Wednesday morning. Came up and talked to Tom, and Tom and I, when I looked at it, we determined that this right here would make this bridge less than safe to be on. And you can kind of see up here, too, where this expansion joint is. It's likely that it settled a little bit, and it topped that top of that concrete out at the top as it would do that wedge. So we feel like it's smoothed a little bit. So we immediately got with the golfer, golf shop, golf operations, got everybody warm on the golf course. When they finished, they had to go back up number two, get across the bridge. Matt came out and got barricades on it where you can't cross it, and we determined to close the golf course temporarily for 30 days till we have an opportunity to get an expert in that can take a look at this bridge, determine what our options are, as far as whether it's safe, first of all. And go back to that picture there, Tom, because the third one, because that really shows that this kind of thing. Yeah, I mean, you can see that pier is supposed to be right here. The bridge has been looked at in the past, because there's some other piers under there that were already, looked like they'd been hit a few times. This pier was good till the last storm. So that is my short version of that. Presently, we're closed. We've contacted an engineer, Crafton and Toll. Crafton and Toll has done all of our bridge work out here since probably prior to 2008. Have numerous reports, they helped us put the new bridge in. Kingswood, they had all the data on all these bridges going forward, so we felt like they would be the most likely person to contact, have the most knowledge of the situation. After this board meeting tonight, given the go-ahead, I will contact them tomorrow, get the process going when they come look at it. Anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
When we looked at bridges before, it was the same. Did you then further look down?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Keith before he leaves? See how quick that works, Keith? I thank you. We appreciate you coming in. Okay, moving on to advisory groups. Lakes, we have somebody here from Lakes. Wait till next month? Gary Recreation, you would, please? Dr. Gary.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Gary, you're on the Recreation Committee. Let me review what we talked about in our last meeting. We had just about everybody there, and we had one person shy because they were on vacation, which was Val. Other than that, we had a full house, which was great. Couple of things, from the amenity perspective. At Branchwood, Debbie Sorsen told us that Jessica had gotten married, and that Discoff has actually been very, very busy. That was just something that we hadn't heard before. Gun range, everything's going well, forest traps up, it's been busy as well. We've had a reduction in an event that we have, though, simply because of the weather that we've had. As it relates to Lake End, that looks good. Linn Park looks good and clean as well, and the RV park and parking stores, that all looks good as well. Reardon Hall's very busy. Tennis Course 1 and 2 have been resurfaced, and employees are busy with tennis courts right now. So it's getting a lot of service here this summer. As it relates to the Locklawn Recreation Complex, it looks great. They cleaned up the Wlandau Park, reopened it, and everything looks, there's a lot of activity in the pavilion as well as, you know, baseball game. Let's see. We also had two visitors that have applied for the O B position act on the Recreation Committee, two very qualified people. And by the meeting in January, through July, we'll have selected one. And the one who may not be selected will be great for one of our other committees as well. Other than that, we had some staff reports. And the one thing from Joan's perspective is that Fireflies and Tailgating will be the second. Any questions?
Special events on the Fourth of July, the pools?
We didn't have a report of what was happening on the Fourth of July, but I think there is, well, the beast, there's a sand, let's say.
Sandfest at the beach.
Yeah, we had the beach.
And also the pools events.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Very appreciated. Jason, go.
Good evening. Our last golf meeting, we are seeing rounds and revenue down still, obviously pretty much weather-related. I know we had course closings with Dogwood and Brittany for a couple of weeks, but it's a bother for her, but most of it is weather-related. The good news is merchandise revenue continues to climb. We're at 14,000 over last year, so pro shops are pushing merchandise. Good news on Brittany, even with that being closed for a couple of weeks, rounds are up over last year slightly. And another good point with that is we're starting to see some of the nine-hole groups move some of their play to Brittany, now from Burksdale, but from the other nine-hole courses, or other nine-hole events that they had. APT event, obviously, was recently, and thanks to all the volunteers, it was a huge, huge success. I thank the tournament staff at APT, extremely excited to come back to develop this stuff. Other, two other things real quick, as will be mentioned later in this board meeting. The committee approved the Brittany recommendation to the board, which I know will be going over later in this meeting. And we approved Gary Mertz to be a new committee member, which we can all associate. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
Questions for Jason. Community involvement. Go ahead, Tim.
Community involvement, they did not have a quorum, so they did not approve minutes for May or June. They will do that in July 11th, meaning it will be July 14th. They've moved due to July 4th to July 14th. Tailgates and Fireflies is this Saturday, starts at 6:00. Just to remind, they're going to be all members. There are tons of activities, posters, movies, food, hot dogs for First Home Versor, as well as Undergamer House of Philly, you know, for First Home Versor. The committee does still need members. Please reach out to anyone you know. There have been a lot of people that have left the community recently, and we don't have a quorum right now, so if you know anyone that'd like to volunteer, please have an application.
Any questions? Saturday night should be a nice night to go out and check out the Fireflies. And then takes care of the advisories and financial report. Go ahead.
All righty, we're looking at the income statements made 2019 year-to-date. These are in thousands of dollars, starting with the P O A site. Gross profit on the P O A is less than budgeted, 263,000. Some of that is due to golf, 173. Lot valuations, 134. Cost of inventory lots, we've seen that before. Past due collections, down 82,000. Legal, it's 51,000, Allison County. Food and beverage is better than budget by 46,000, the BV Bar and Grill. Cell Tower rents again, 44,000, better than budget, gain from Cell Tower, including sales between agreements. Cell Tower also is 1,69,000. That's what we received, and that's the difference from last year. So it's 859 positive, and 1,690, that is the Cell Tower. Food and beverage is better by 110 again, BV Bar and Grill opened late March 2018. Rebates, better by 53, the Carol rebate we got. Stump Dump, down by 68, no stump dump income this year. Golf is down by 106 compared to last year. And past due collections, down 119, legal down 80. Lot valuations makes up the balance at negative 135. Looking at operating expenses on the P O A site against budget, maintenance and repairs are better by 178. Salaries and wages are better by 165, all positive across divisions. Equipment and tools are better by 71,000, small equipment purchases. GM contingency, better by 68. Supplies are better by 28. Professional services, that's the stump dump, at negative 379, and that makes up the 201 positive, better than budget. Looking at against prior year comparison, maintenance and repairs are better, yeah, excuse me, are better by 156. We have 2018 flood expenses. Equipment and tools are better by 109, small equipment purchases. Employee benefits, which is primary health insurance, better by 59. GM contingency, 45. Supplies, 24. And professional services, again, that's the stump dump, 379 negative. EBITDA is a negative 62,000 on this statement. If we take out stump dump expense, which is a one-time thing, and a one-time cell tower revenue, looking at that same statement, here's what the numbers would look like. EBITDA would be a positive 274,000, and prior year would be a better than prior year of 195. The stump dump amount and expenses was a 378, that's to cut that out, and also the negative from the cell towers. Looking at the water utility, same five months, gross profit is down 123. Water usage is down due to our wet spring. And compared to prior year, scrap and disposal is 17,000, that's the disposal of our old water meters, and water usage is down against prior year, 34,000. Operating expenses are better by 67. Labor is positive by 34. And maintenance repairs, positive by 21, system repairs. Prior year comparison, equipment is better by 116. Outside contracts are down by 60 compared to last year due to our water meter cellular pass-through costs on the dividers. EBITDA is a negative 56, five months running on the water utility. Back to the question report. Tim, any questions?
Yeah, I noticed that you pulled, you called out the O B as a bar and grill. Is there a way to collect Lake Point itself?
I pulled out the positive, it's up to Tom on the board what you want me to do. I'll be happy.
Can we talk about the G M meeting, and then we'll go from there to decide a question presented?
Wasn't those numbers though relative to all?
Who did you remember?
Yes. Or was it just BV?
Right, but DV's was the higher.
I'd like to compliment almost all of the divisions in looking at their particular expenses. Almost all of them are very, very professional, curative, and I don't have my speaker on, but anyway, I'd like to compliment the, almost all of the divisions for expense controls thus far in the year, in a year that was extremely tight, both P O A and the fire expenses, was a little bit, so congratulations to most departments.
Any other questions for Jonah? If not, we'll move on to open forum. Last month's open forum comments, there were none. This time of open forum, I want to remind people that you have a three-minute limit, and I have a sign-up here. David Barfield, direct question.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking the members to the board for your willingness to contribute to your community. I think you'll find that this is sometimes a fatless job, but trust me, the pay and benefits make it all work well.
That's correct.
Right now, you probably have a new director orientation, and you've received a binder that has all the governing documents, just like the one I received when I was on the board. You probably also got some discussions from staff about how to apply those governing documents and conduct business. At my orientation, Attorney Chastity Clark, who's the predecessor, spent a good deal of time on three cases, three court orders in the legal section of that binder, one of which concerned water department funds, and I'd like to talk a little bit about that tonight. This 1990 case concerned a five, or centered on a $5 water availability fee that the P O A implemented. The issue was not to want the $5 fee per se, it was how the P O A wanted to use that fee. The P O A argued that Article 8, Section 3D, which was a general authorization to collect assessment and fees, superseded and expanded Article 6, Section 1, which authorized fees and assessments for water system maintenance. And thus, that allowed the P O A to use water department funds for, quote, "any and all common property amenities." The court disagreed, citing, quote, "basic contract law rules stating that a general provision cannot take precedent over a specific provision. To do so would make the specific provision moot and, quote, 'simply excess verbiage.'" The court added that the P O A was free to use any generally accepted accounting procedures to create separate line item entries for water department and P O A funds. The funds need not be separate bank accounts, but the accounting process must be segregated for purposes of meeting the cost of the water system maintenance. That's a very significant ruling, because that's what established the separation between water utility and the P O A, and how we manage those funds. It became a color of money issue. It may be one corporation, and they have one checking account, but the water department money in that checking account is a different color. Okay. The accounting process that we use today was not created, contrary to what you may have read in the paper, was not created to make budgeting and estimating easier for Dwayne and his merry man. The court ordered us to do something. I'll move on. I know that's frustrating in light of the membership that continually refuses to grant us an assessment increase, which is much needed, but in hindsight, I can see the benefit of that for two reasons. One, it protects each entity from each other. It means you can't bankrupt the water department because of reckless spending or malfeasance on the other side of the ledger. So I'm just going to read real quickly.
I'm going to have to watch out, it's past three minutes.
It's just one, two sentences. Anybody want to hear it? "It is ordered and ruled that any funds collected pursuant to Article 6, Section 1 must be segregated from other revenue by an established accounting procedure, as may be adopted by the P O A, and used for the purpose stated, being to meet the cost of the water system alone." So don't go after the water system funds unless you absolutely have to, and if you have to, make it clear that you're borrowing the funds, not just cavalier or casually reallocating funds. You can't do that, okay?
Isn't that what we do now?
All right, I don't, may I answer a question? I don't know that we've ever borrowed money. It didn't happen while I was on the board. I know, I'm pretty certain that it's never been challenged or litigated as to whether or not you can borrow. The court order doesn't address borrowing funds in either of our governing documents. So I would assume that when someone wants to challenge what the word "only" means, that you can borrow it. But you need to have a plan for paying it back on a specific date.
Susan Nettle.
Hi, my name is Susan Nettle, 41, La Coo Brine. And today, I'm going to talk to you from my role as the president of the Nine Hole Women's Golf Association. Okay, I do other things, too. But in really regards to Burksdale Bridge. So I was out there this morning looking at it. This is a scary situation, and the bridge is completely unsafe, and nobody should ever be on it. And I just wanted to take a moment to, we usually have about 60 people play golf every Monday at Burksdale. And we know that changing those schedules in the middle of the season, especially on the busiest day of the week, is never an easy process. And I just wanted to express my appreciation really for the rapidity, the quickness that the golf office took to get our group rescheduled for next week. Already been done. And even more than that, the steps that are being taken by the staff at the course that we're going to, we're going to Brittany. But I'm sure the same thing is happening at every other course, where the golf operations people are making sure that there are enough people to handle the carts. Getting 60 people on a surprise is not a good experience, okay? So they've already asked for a cart. So they've already asked for carts, I know that the superintendent is taking a look to get, to find good places for the gold tees, for the gold players, the players that play it up, so that we can keep, we have a fairly elderly group in some of our flights, and so they need to be in front of some of these ditches at Brittany. They've already taken care of that. They're changing their mowing schedule a bit, because it used to be Brittany was sort of at the end of the, it didn't matter when they mowed, because there was nobody there. So just all of these small proactive steps that the staff is taking, really without being told, and I'm sure that's happening at all the golf courses, and I really wanted to, it's semi appreciation to their work.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Liz Teal.
Hi, I'm Liz Teal, 95, Lakeview Drive. I'd like to welcome all the new board members to the board, and I'd like to thank you all for volunteering to serve on the board without compensation. And special thanks are owed to Tom Judson for taking the lead and putting out the stunt dump fire in a timely manner. And Belvista POA hosts many golf and recreation events. These events are well-managed and benefit our community. Of course, they wouldn't run as smoothly without the large number of enthusiastic volunteers. We are fortunate to live in a community that values volunteerism. I appreciate your time and dedication to the POA, and have a great Fourth of July and enjoy your summer.
Thank you. I also appreciate all the volunteers. Charlie Teal.
We hope to see a twofer tonight. Jason mentioned the OBT tournament. I'm the president of the Belvista Foundation. We're the charity partner for the Cooper Communities Northwest Arc Sub Charity Classic that took place at Belvista Country Club the week of June 10th. This was the third year of the tournament. First few years were at Highlands Golf Course. This year, we moved everything to Country Club. We had 127 APT professionals and three amateurs in the field that came from 21 states and from six foreign countries. We had golfers from Finland, Canada, El Salvador, Australia, Panama, and South Africa. There were 52 APT professionals and one amateur who made the cut for the final two rounds on Saturday and Sunday, sharing a purse of more than $120,000. James Nitties of Newcastle, Australia, won the tournament with a score of 267, 21 under par, and claimed the $20,000 first prize. The Belvista Country Club course record was set on Friday by APT pro Blake Pew with an i-member round of 63. The Pro-Am party at Silent Auction on Monday, June 10th had 181 guests. There are more than 75 items and more than 100 bottles of wine donated for the Silent Auction and Live Auction, which generated proceeds of $12,400. On Tuesday, June 11th, we have 47 three-person Pro-Am tournament teams paired with APT professionals. And as other people have mentioned, the number of volunteers who helped with the tournament increased this year to 201 individuals. Pretty amazing. Each of the five designated charities, Belvista Sunrise Rugby Club, Boys and Girls Club of Benton County, Belvista Animal Shelter, Belvista Percy Van Village House, contributed items for the Silent Auction and recruited Pro-Am tournament teams. Those charities will collectively receive $4,615 for those efforts. The designated charities will also receive a distribution of tournament net proceeds of $30,000, $6,000 each. The foundation is retaining a reserve of some of the net proceeds for future events. So a very successful tournament. There are a number of people on the board that either participated or helped out, and thank you very much. The APT folks are really happy coming to Belvista.
Okay.
And thank you, Charlie, for facilitating that.
Everyone.
That's what I have for open forums. See me? Okay, let's move on. Yes.
Is it open forum now?
Go ahead.
My name is Robert Scholz, I've been here for a long time, but I'd like to ask one question about the Arton Bowl land. When we bought that land, the golfers put it bucking in half each for three years to pay for that land with the idea that that money would be used for golf. Is that still the situation?
Well, it was decided that $5.1 million was used in golf to improve golf in the last four years, so they probably have at least that much in return.
The money generated from Arton Bowl will be used for golf, is that correct?
I said we've already used $5, it's a $5.1 million, great, Tom.
So the dollar increase, we have found no proof that there was a commitment made, that those funds...
Well, I know, but most of the golfers will still tell you different.
So we have found no proof of that. There was $1.2 million collected by that additional dollar. The greens modification at the Country Club in 2010 cost $600,000, so that would theoretically, if that commitment had been made, and I'm not saying it had been, that would lower that dollar amount down to $600,000. Now, between 2012 and 2018, we have put over $5 million in capital improvements into the golf courses, and it's all been in the golf courses. It hasn't, I'm not including like this building or anything like that. So what Ruth was saying is that effectively, those funds have already been paid, and here's the next step, the next part of that. The reality is, is we need 100% of those funds for paying for the fighting the fire.
Then today that says, no, we're not using that for golf.
We've already used that, because we spent $5 million.
That money wasn't available then.
We've spent $5 million on golf improvement between 12 and 18.
Anybody else?
My name is Bachan Bernen, and I live in, we're at the start 12 years, on 16 Sutherland Lane, about maybe zero to mile from the fire. We were almost, pretty close to our house from almost a year, and thank you very much for doing it now, and we are very happy. But there is one legal problem. I got this paper about the lawsuit, and the big lawyers, big insurance. We are little people, we are on strict budget, on retirement, and we have a problem with our, we did the power washing of the house just before this fire started. Now the house looks horrible, it's like slimy, black, we have some pictures. I would like to ask you, who can reimburse us for it? It's maybe not matter, but for us it's a lot of effort. Is any possibility that you can apply for some reimbursement for something?
Yeah, as you mentioned, their insurance companies are involved, and that would be the next step for people who have been impacted by the fire, would be to make an insurance claim with your homeowner's insurance, and then they would in turn seek reimbursement for those who are responsible. Unfortunately, that hasn't been determined yet who's going to be responsible, and who's going to ultimately pay for it, so it's going to take some time, so I recommend an insurance claim to your own insurance who will then seek reimbursement from those parties who are responsible.
My insurance, I have to have some lawyer. Really, no lawyer, it is not worthwhile, because it probably will take much more than that, it's really worse. So, you know, it's a really very difficult situation for us.
Yeah, I understand it. It's impacted.
There's no answer, I will give it to you.
Yeah, I don't really, I don't have a good answer for you, but that's the best I have at this point.
And besides, the other thing is, I'm a swimmer, I go to Brittany Lake, and for three years, I'm asking for doing something about the road. The road looks horrible around the, around the, about of the dam. And it's a very dangerous situation for the car and go there.
Which lake is that?
Brittany Lake.
Brittany Lake.
Yeah, last year, there was some ducts damaged, and I asked, the people, Rangers coming, and they were very nice, they repaired it, that's true. But the big job is not done for three years, and I didn't even buy the card, the picture ID for the $30, because I said, if I have to pay so much for this awful situation that's there, I don't know if it's right.
I'll speak for Tom, but we'll look into that. All right, down, I'll speak.
Well, because of three years it's not done, and I ask, every year I ask for it. I hope, now that you people have so much expenses for the fire, I think the problem wouldn't be done anyway. But please take account of your thing.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say that I'm happy to see the new face that's here, and I appreciate y'all's time. I know, I'm not always up on everything. Can somebody explain to me the difference between having a membership card that they send to me every year, and the benefit of having a picture photo membership card that I'm paying, you know, $35 for? I had a lot of people PM me that they don't really understand, so if we could just maybe say exactly what that is, then maybe the people watching, they'll understand, because I don't really, I don't know what to tell them, I don't really understand it either.
Well, I encourage you to look at this fee schedule, and you'll see that by having the photo APT card, you get discounted rates on pretty much all our user fees. Also, if you go to the restaurant, you get a 10% discount by having that card.
Okay, so the $35 card only helps if we're using facilities?
Correct. If you don't use any of the facilities, then it is probably not in your best interest to get the photo ID card.
Okay, how, what, because I don't have the fee schedule in front of me, I can look it up. Well, say I want to use the pool. What's the difference between...
$2.
...the fee schedule for if I have a photo ID versus if I don't?
I don't have the fee scheduled in front of me, but...
Ruth does.
I encourage you looking at your fee schedule, and you see that the more you use the amenities, the more the benefit you receive in getting that photo ID card. And at some point, you may decide that it is in your best interest to get that photo ID card. If you don't use the amenities that much, it may not be in your best interest to just use the card that you get in the mail.
Okay, so it's not going to be like a future requirement? That's what the people are saying. I mean, you know, Rick or somebody says something, it just goes on. So what people are saying is, they're starting that now, and they're eventually going to require everybody to purchase a photo ID card. So you're saying that is not the case?
That is not the case. We've never contemplated requiring that of everybody.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering what people ask me, you know.
Because if we, I'm not a lawyer, but if we were to require every resident to purchase a $35 photo ID card, that effectively would be an assessment increase without a photo membership, which would be illegal.
Okay, well, I, you know, there's a lot of stuff swirls around out there, so I just, when I get it, I just want to come forward and clear it up so that...
No problem. But you're going to see the benefit in the user fees, and the more you use the amenities, which we encourage our residents to do, the more the benefit you receive.
Okay. The rest is 10% off each time you use it? Okay, but it's 5% off with our regular card, correct? Okay.
Joy, I want to encourage those people who are asking you these questions to come to one of these meetings.
Oh, I do. I say, why don't you come to the meetings? They don't want to get up here and speak, so they don't speak. And I have a quick question. Have we ever had a golf cart parade here for the Fourth of July?
Parade and golf.
A golf cart parade?
There are golf carts here in the parade, the Fourth of July parade. But it's not, I mean, people wait.
Okay, it was a fun thing that, I went to a community a couple of years ago that had like...
Party for me.
Okay, and they paid like $25 to put their cart in the golf cart parade, and then they decorated, and they gave away little trophies for the best decorated.
Never paid any money to do shit.
Well, I mean, it was, it was just a fun thing, and it was a fundraiser for whatever, so I just thought I'd ask. It was fun to watch.
Okay, I think that would be a great thing to bring to the meeting hall meeting.
There you go.
I just, I just wondered, while I was up there, just curious. It's a fun thing.
Now that's it for open forums? Okay, let's move on to the budget calendar.
We have the budget calendar in the pack. We've handed out a walk-in memo with a couple of updates that were made at the work session. And this budget calendar is fairly similar to previous year calendars. The big notice, I think, is to our committees, our JAG committees, that we're going to ask them to start working on their recommendations July 1st, and to have those recommendations in by August 16th. Also, as you move through the process, you'll see that we are planning on having our annual presentation, budget presentation to the community on November 11th at 6:00 p.m. at Bearden Hall. And if all goes well, on November 21st at the regular meeting for the board at 6:00 p.m., the board will potentially vote to approve the budget at that time.
The purpose of the calendar is to kind of check points along the way to make sure everybody's doing as they should, so we're ready for the budget in November, in early November, so we can move on. Any questions from the board?
I think the plan was there was not going to be an assessment increase, or at least it wasn't part of the proposed budget. I think we talked about that a little bit.
We budget as if we would not receive, either not go for an assessment increase or not receive one, but we budget as if we don't get that increase.
Okay. I had a couple of members ask, some follow-up, which I shouldn't have minded, but it didn't. So is there any thinking, and I know this is early in the planning process, but is there any initial thoughts about the, what will happen to the user fees for next year?
I think it's too early, but we have, we have talked briefly about, in many cases, we feel that the user fees are probably at the top end. We even have a golf study that indicates that. And so I think it's a little premature to have a conversation at this time.
Yeah, I think there's a local competitive, a local...
Yeah, we do, we do a competitive market analysis, so we can see how we stack up against the other courses, other recreation facilities, other restaurants, and so forth, so we can see how we compare.
The rental boats may be a little lower than the competition, something to consider. And again, this is probably just premature, but since it's come up, it's just maybe something to think about. Is there some idea that, you know, this, we talked about the pool, the dollar difference, and then the public comes in and a dollar difference? Is there any initial thinking that maybe those spreads will change somehow?
Well, I think it's too early at this point. It's definitely, the board will have the opportunity to comment on the recommendations of the fee schedule. I think you're a little bit early, but I think that it's good to have these types of conversations on the matter. And simply because the management team brings recommendations to the board, does not necessarily mean that the board will agree or approve those recommendations. And I think it's a little bit early. Okay. Like I said, those were some member questions, and I thought I'd follow up on.
Sure.
Other questions? Okay, let's move on to the Joint Advisory Committee Report.
On my, on this item, mine of 10, and we have another walk-in memo on that that we have I know. And this, actually, this is a good question, whether we need to vote on this or not. This is just, it's not, it's not a requirement, the only, you know, the policy 7.03, I think it is, 7.02, 3. One of these is fairly limited in its guidance. The main stipulation is that the budget must be shared at the board prior to November. This is just to, as Ruth indicated, to give us checkpoints to, so everybody's on the same page, so the board understands all the steps that management takes in the preparation of a budget. But a vote is really not necessarily necessary unless the board feels
This is large and expanded from the last, probably three or four years it has been this way. Before you had yours kind of lump sum at the end, you got the budget and you voted on it, yes or no?
Yeah, and the major change we've made about two, three years ago was to expedite the approval into November versus December, because it put a huge scramble in December for our property owners and for our member services department. And that way they can prepare, you know, all of December and all of the government will know what the rates for the next year will be. And there was a email, some email conversation. The policy 7.03 says the minimum standard, and I would rather exceed the minimum and provide the board with more information so they have a general idea of what's going on as opposed to being surprised and on the first just being handed the budget. I'd rather have the board be knowledgeable well in advance.
A lot of, a lot of this with the budget, as we work through it, Steve, it'll be explained as we go through it and you'll see. It's a process to get that budget up and running. And Tom does a good job of keeping us informed of what's going on and where they're at.
Right. Work is through the guidelines, the guidelines in that policy.
That's what we do as a recorders, do along the line. That's what we do.
Okay, moving on.
Next item on the agenda is the recommendations from the Golf Committee regarding Brittany Golf Course. And we have another memo that was walked in with modifications that were made at the work session. It is contemplated, if the board agrees, that two, two measures would be taken, two votes would be taken. The first is whether to keep Brittany open and the second regarding creating a Brittany subcommittee that would be in place to track and make sure that the ideas that were generated by the community and by the Golf Committee are followed through and not forgotten, because we wouldn't want it to be forgotten. And then we relook at the progress of the golf course a year from now and realize that it's no better than before. So this subcommittee would shepherd through those ideas, because many of these ideas came from the residents that came to the meeting and they're good quality ideas. We just want to make sure that there's good follow-through on that.
First off, we want to thank the committee, JAC and their entire committee, and also the community for coming forth and putting their input in regarding Brittany and some of the suggestions and ideas, as Ed was saying, are indicated tonight. So I would like to have a motion on the table to accept their, JAC's recommendation and then we can visit about it. A second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Is this a vote on whether to keep
Whether to, yes. First one is to keep Brittany open. I'm going to simply say, obviously, the people spoke for themselves and they definitely wanted it kept open and brought very good valid answers and reasons why, et cetera. The Golf Committee did a tremendous job in bringing it together and putting it out there for the public, and we highly appreciate that. Jason, your whole entire group. So other
Yeah, I was just going to say, job well done and also to the membership for getting out and discussing it. I know there was a couple of hundred, 300 maybe?
Yeah.
Petitions? So, you know, it took a village to basically come together and I think with this unfortunate incident with Burksdale, it may have been the right decision all along and got shepherded through.
Yeah, I might point out, based on the, sorry, based on the Golf Committee report through May, the rounds were, at Brittany, were 13, 18, and then last year they were 12, 78 through May. Two years ago, they were double that, 26, 72. And I realize whether it's that factor, all this
You were down two weeks, but it's Other discussion on the first motion? If not, let's take a vote on the motion as to accept the recommendation to keep Brittany open at this time. Do we have a proxy? Okay, I forgot to say that again.
I'm sorry.
I forgot to say that again.
I have a proxy for the first motion, so don't vote.
Okay, now we have another item on the agenda for a motion, please, for a subcommittee to be formed through the Golf Committee to keep tabs and kind of shepherd this whole idea through and some of the recommendations to see what works and doesn't work. Can I have a motion for that? Merrick? A second? Jerry? Discussion?
It was also contemplated during the work session that this subcommittee would report back on a quarterly basis and we would include this information in the golf newsletter so the community is aware of what's going on, how and the amount played that the golf course succeeded.
And if you look at the recommendations, many of them are going to take some time to implement. It isn't something you could start tomorrow and start evaluating at the end of the week. It's going to take some time to do. And so that's what we needed to give them time to put things into effect before we started counting numbers to see if it worked or not. So that was one of the issues that we need to be aware of as we go. Merrick?
I like this approach particularly because it makes for a, an effort on both sides, the P O A board and the membership. We've all done a step up in this board.
Where it just says at the end that the golf season, we need to put, was that 2022?
Actually, that was one question I had for you in the email that was going back and forth. On the last sentence, additionally, the closure of Brittany will be reevaluated October 2021. My notes, I had 2020, so I was not sure which was, but you had in your email, 2021, so I was not sure.
Yeah, we was like two year, two years.
But I was, I'm quarterly.
Yep, right. I just want to make sure that we had the right date.
Ruth, on this, reporting back to the membership, how they're doing, you know, with using Brittany, is it a possibility that in the golf newsletter once a month, we just report the rounds for the month? Because we get it every month. I mean, is it something that we can just go ahead and put in the newsletter?
We can, we can do it monthly, but I think it is more impactful on a quarterly basis. And as Ruth just indicated, some of these efforts take time. And I think that I, we can do it, management can do it either way. My recommendation is quarterly, because then it becomes more impactful.
I would have to hope that in the next 30 days, that people would, first of enclosed, that some of those rounds move to Brittany. So I think that that's a false sense of added rounds at this particular time. So I think if you'd go on a quarterly basis, you would have a better idea as to the number of rounds actually increase.
The mother nature always messes up.
It appears to.
I would, you know, I still, I believe, you know, we need to try these ideas and it does take time. Biggest impact, I believe, will be that the golfers themselves decide that they are going to go play Brittany. If they decide to do it, they're not waiting for somebody else to respond to these marketing and whatnot. The golfers we have need to use it for us. And that's why I was monthly, but quarterly is fine too. The golfers need to understand that they're the ones responsible.
If they add rounds, that's a different issue. Anyone else have a discussion on it?
They have actually, I think monthly is something that the members need to see, because they are the ones who came out and spoke very actively about keeping it. So to see monthly if their rounds are not going up, that's because they're not like, I do think that's a great
Monthly would be shown in the golf, we, for the golf monthly JAC, they have Brittany broken out, so people could see that already. Whereas if we want to compare to last year, et cetera, quarterly would be, I think, more powerful, because they already show the monthly change from month to month. The JAC, no, in the JAC and in the minutes, et cetera.
A monthly could have a negative impact.
So you're really getting it both ways. You're getting it monthly of the round change and then an update quarterly, whether the events that happened or put in the effect are working or not.
Monthly numbers can be impacted both positively and negatively by weather. Where we walk for a quarter, it washes it out a little bit and you have less of an impact on weather, as a result of weather, other than most recently, where other than bad weather's in the period. We're already right now seeing leaks moving over to Brittany in the period. I think that should be included in those letters too.
I assume internally, the ideas that get, come out of here and get used, that internally staff will basically say, oh, that was a great idea and it worked here and maybe down the road, we can use the same thing on other courses.
Absolutely, it was a great idea that translates to the other golf courses, we will absolutely use it in other courses.
Other input? My understanding from this, Jason, please correct me if I'm wrong again, JAC will form the committee themselves and select one liaison to be on that committee from the board?
That is correct.
One of their liaisons to the Golf Committee?
That is correct.
Okay, and you will do it yourselves internally?
That is correct.
Okay, that's my understanding and I just want to make sure the rest of the board members do that too, that they would be doing the selecting that committee. Other discussion? If not, let's take a vote on that motion, that we allow the JAC to go ahead and have a subcommittee and try to increase rounds at Brittany. All those accepting in favor? Number two, thank you very much. Jason, we appreciate everything you've done to help
Absolutely.
Your entire group.
All right, next up on the agenda, on page 67 of your work packet, the Golf Committee met on June 5th and unanimously nominated Gary Mertz to join their committee.
And we really are adding a resume of Gary's sell-out. Like a motion to accept Gary Mertz to the Golf Committee?
Absolutely.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? He has a very impressive resume. If not, a call for a vote, all those in favor of Gary Mertz moving to the Golf Committee. Thank you.
On June 12th, the LEX Committee unanimously nominated Jason Adams to join their committee.
Need a motion to accept Jason Adams to the LEX Committee?
Absolutely.
Second? Second. Discussion? Once again, who was given his resume? Any discussion? If not, a call for a vote to accept Jason Adams as the LEX Committee. Jason? Thank you.
Next up, an update on the Highland Stump Dump. Give you a little history, that stump dump that's been open for 35 years, the P O A hired F T N for lateral portions last year to determine how to remediate the site. On May 29th, A D Q accepted the plans, the remediation plans that were put together by F T N. These plans included a geosynthetic clay liner. The budget which was created, the 2019 budget was created effectively at the same time or just before even the hiring of F T N. So at the time, we had basically no idea how much it would cost to remediate the site because the plans had not yet been developed and the plans had not yet been approved by A D Q. We budgeted $100,000 for that effort. The plans that have been approved by A D Q have a cost attached to them of $326,000. They have also asked or indicated a 20% contingency, depending upon the footprint of the area that we will need to cover with the geosynthetic clay liner, so it could increase. No additional approval is required by the board, this is an operating expense, but clearly this is significantly over budget and we wanted to make the board aware that this expense is going to be significantly higher than originally estimated. With regards to cash flow, fortunately, we're selling Arc Mo for the full appraised value, which is more than the secured loan that we have, and we'll be able to use those additional funds to pay for the excess. Any questions?
Just kind of awareness. Any questions? Update on the
I encourage our residents to continue to go on to our webpage to get updates. We are posting updates on a pretty regular basis. We did drone footage yesterday and there was update provided. We plan on doing additional drone footage next week. At this point, it looks like Phase 1 will be complete July 2nd. We watched the drone footage, my voiceover states that it should be done on Sunday. The rain that we had earlier this week has slowed us down once again. And so we now anticipate, weather permitting, that all work will be done on July 2nd and they will demobilize the following day. At that point, we have, according to the administrative order with A D Q, we have 60 days to submit plans for Phase 2, so we are right on target. And that's the update. Any questions?
Any questions?
All right. Trying to keep the board apprised of litigation lawsuits that are outstanding. I just wanted to provide an update of this. I mentioned before that this was coming down the road and so it actually happened earlier this week. These five, in the area memo to the board, the two, two filings that I talked about was that upon the filing of the McCumber case against the P O A, we submitted claims to both our insurance carriers for the time period that we're covered over that, from 2004 through 2016. Both carriers denied coverage. So one of the filings is that we have filed suit, cross complaint, third-party claim against Nation Power Philadelphia Insurance in the current case. That is against Philadelphia. Kutaq Rock has conflict with Nationwide Insurance, so we've engaged a separate law firm to file a third-party complaint against Nationwide. So both of those were filed earlier this week in the McCumber case. The other, the other update I have on the lawsuit is I mentioned before that we were going to file a cross complaint against the other defendants in the case. Those are, as you know, Tom Ferguson, the mountain storage, Brown Street Service and B T S Equipment. Those are people that we have been led with. They all had an ownership interest in the property at one time or another. We've been led with, they're able to consider potential responsible parties, so the next step was for us to file a suit, a cross claim against those defendants to try to recover some of the costs that used to be expended for fighting the fire. So this week, the lawsuit got costs that we've expended for fighting the fire. So, this week, the lawsuit got considerably more complex and difficult to track, but I will be providing updates to the board as things come out back on that. So, any questions?
Any questions? Could you explain a little bit more on the suit filed against us by Philadelphia Insurance? What is it they're trying to get from that?
So, the McComber, McComber case was filed in the state court. Philadelphia Insurance has filed a claim against the POA in federal court due to the, you know, we say they owe us insurance coverage. They say that it's excluded out of the policy, so there's, they're asking a judge to decide that conflict. So, they're hoping by filing in federal court, that they'll get a judge to rule in their favor that it, the policy excluded coverage for that, but that's essentially what the disagreement's about.
And because they do business in other states, it becomes federal?
Correct.
No questions? If not, get on your own.
So, a couple of things. The sale of Arkmo land is progressing. We anticipate we will close towards the end of July. The board took a vote to sell Arkmo in May. We received a couple of questions regarding how can we sell that land, or we can't sell other land. And the reason is, is because the Arkmo land was never subjected to the declaration. Only Cooper, only the developer, has the right to subject land or pull that under the declaration. That was never done. So, the POA has the right to sell that land without a vote of the entire membership. It was a vote of the board that authorized it. So, that we should go through. We're selling the land for the full appraised value, which I'm greeted with the things to say. And any questions?
Any questions? Okay, there are no other petitions. Announcements, Rules and Regulation Committee will meet shortly after this meeting in the area, and they will be discussing the proposed change to policy one point one two bylaws, Article Three, Section Five A, to have due the board in ten minutes. Proposed change can be found on the webpage. Fireflies and tailgating community involvement committee has Saturday, June 29th, at six-thirty, it says, is it six-thirty or six?
Uh, it is six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
I'm getting it at six, that's it.
And I'm guessing to you that if people still want to volunteer, they can contact you to volunteer. There are plenty of opportunities.
Absolutely.
GM meeting Thursday, July 11th, at two-thirty in the boardroom. It's a closed session. The work session is Thursday, July 18th, at nine o'clock in the boardroom, and that's open. The Board of Directors' regular meeting is Thursday, July 25th, at six o'clock, and for future, August 8th, two-thirty for the GM. August 15th, nine o'clock for the work session, and August 24th, at six o'clock for the boardroom. If there's no other, for the good of the cause, nothing for the good of the cause. We stand adjourned.